And there we are, tunnel meeting number eighty, January ninth, twenty twenty four. Happy New Year to everybody. It's January ninth. Uh, it is still the first one of the year, so it's gonna be a kick out here and I'm quite confident with that. Uh, let's skip the ten minutes of uh Happy New Year wishing and stuff. Uh, we've got quite a bunch of topics today. A couple of mentions at the start for BGI twenty four, uh, one for the supervisory council and for deep funding. And after that, I want to talk and discuss um a little bit on the ambassador role. Have a bit of a temperature check. We played around with some numbers uh on how to define that role and yeah, looks good for uh for an experiment. After that, we'll have space for um work group update. They'll be short and concise today, so it won't take too much of the meeting. Let me first um give shout outs to those that have joined today's session. And we're joined by Tavo, Sharon, Curtis, Guillermo, Ian, Judith and Rojo. Thanks a lot for joining uh the session. Quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we do. Basically, it's um a collective of people that all care about Singularity Net mission and vision and want to contribute to it. We do this by a whole bunch of different self-organizing workgroups. I'm not gonna list all the opportunities there are, but if you're interested in joining, do hop onto our Discord server. There's a getting started channel there that will get you started and then you'll find your spot, I'm sure. And for that, uh, we do have uh Sharon amongst us. Um. Yeah, if you if you want, um feel free to, well, give a little bit of an introduction to the pre-event challenges and and maybe the event itself if you want.
Yeah, thanks so much. So I guess we all know each other by now. Uh, but yeah, it never hurts to just. So I I'm actually inviting more pioneers of transformation to the gathering of the tribes. You know, there is this BGI twenty four event and most people that know of it are from the Singularity Net tribe and and some sister brother tribes. My goal is to reach out to regenerative movements, SolarPunks, LunaPunk, PingPunks, all kind of other movements around. Not necessarily devs, but yeah, anyone who is interested. Now I'm using LinkedIn reaching out to entrepreneurship professors also to. So this main fire, I'd like it to, as I said, like to to act as a beacon and and see more fires being lit all around the world in in academia, for example. The challenge is uh if you haven't joined or if you joined, you you know it by now. I have some tasks every week we discuss on the weekly topic. The the topic we cover now is ethics. And if you did the exercise, like you saw when you go in and sign the the terms, terms and conditions, so you see how the design of any system eh affects affects um um who we are. So so I I I invite you to actually press the link in that exercise uh and and check it out if you are in the Telegram or WhatsApp groups. So uh the goal is the same with the ambassadors program and and Peter, you are invited also to to introduce this on on coming Thursday. Actually, I'm also inviting guest speakers as a surprise every every Thursday, like like, you know, to join the conversation. And and like I've already invited some friends of mine and and like um. Yeah, some of them even also are speakers in in the conference. So it's it's like, I mean, it's really a great honor to have them with us in in such a small panel and and having a discussion about, you know, sharing ideas. Um, yeah, that's more or less. And yeah, for me, I have like this short term eh concept with the groups as they ever grow. Eh, the medium one is actually, yeah, to activate them and and connect it with the ambassador program. And the longer is with the Sofia verse and Geo Cash game. That's that's how I see. And there are more elements and I I will not connect all the dots. I think if you, anyone here wants to approach me and and talk to me in person and share ideas and brainstorm, I would be more than happy. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Now, thank you, Peter, and thank you, everybody.
Thanks a lot for that uh for that intro. Um, I pasted in in chat, something I'll also um paste under the under the video once it's on YouTube. Uh, and and just for clarity, so the the session this Thursday will very likely be at twelve UTC, correct?
Yeah, that that's what I aim because I I wanna try this and and um I wanna try also seventeen eh UTC, but let's see down the road eh how many people join. I don't wanna overwhelm even us, you know, with too many meetings. So let's see how it works Thursday and and twelve PM UTC and and take it from there. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that that's all for now. If if anyone has a question or ideas to suggest or because uh yeah, you already participated, so yeah.
Yeah, there's quite some people in the current call that also joined last Thursday. Was it Thursday? It was, yeah.
Yeah.
Judith, go for it.
Um, I just have a question regarding the BGI summit in general. So on the YouTube livestream, I think Ben mentioned there is a way that you can apply to attend the summit. Now, I ha- I have looked at the website and I'm not quite sure if I'm understanding this. Are they looking for just like just anyone can apply or they're looking for leaders in this? Like leaders and you have to be leader in this space and and what does? It it says on there, we would like to invite you to the summit. Like, what what does that mean? You you don't pay a ticket price or? You just, I'm not quite sure about this invitation feature. And then what is needed to apply?
Yeah.
Are they gonna fly you out or?
Um, basically. Are you one of them? Sharon, you wanna answer or should I?
Oh, I I'm I'm not fully uh um, you know, updated, but I I think the event is closed by invitation and and then there is the unconference, which is, this is what people register. And this is um like what I invite everyone to register. I still need to be more clarified about how the unconference online event is gonna look like. Um, yeah, that's something. Um, this is as this is gonna be the highlight of all the BGI challenges and and fireside weekly meetings. So so during the event, these two days, so we'll have this ongoing unconference eh meetings. And and I think it's gonna be live streamed with the guests in in Panama having a panel conversation live on YouTube and and then um people could just join in the conversation. That that our would see it. Of course, coming to Panama, Judith, is is the great idea and.
Well, I was actually thinking about it, that's why I'm asking, but I'm a bit unclear if this is a conference for the brightest minds in AI, which I'm certainly not. Like, I don't know if I have a if I'm a good fit for that conference. Like, I would like to actually be there in person, but it seems more like it's for, you know, the best of the best of the best of the people.
I don't know. I mean, you.
I'm concerned about that.
Um, you 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 maybe you you have nothing to lose, just asking yourself. Maybe you'll be surprised, you know, maybe you'll be invited. I don't know.
No, you're you're right. It's um, th- there's some vetting there. Um, basically, it's, well, it's a it's a it's a venue, venue, right? So there's limited uh space. And then people that apply will be uh checked, let's say, um to see if it makes sense. But at the same time, talking about the best of the best, um, we as ambassadors, there might be some slots we can. Uh, it's a it's a limited amount, but it's it's not fully finalized, but I I would say we can, well, for sure, some people uh would be possible.
I I really don't mind flying out. I'm just trying to figure out if it makes sense for me to be there or if I'm like. Yeah.
All I can, all I can.
Let's put it that way.
All I can say, ev- everyone here uh is already the best of the best.
Ah, but in all seriousness, uh in all seriousness, um, I mean, uh, I think we can uh get for sure like three to five slots for dedicated for ambassadors. And then that becomes your accreditation rather than um, I don't know, years of um scientific background or or, you know, um.
Should I apply as an ambassador or should I DM you?
Well, it's it's something um, right now, it's it's not quite sorted yet. Like um, in theory, I would be a big fan of um potentially covering some of the costs. Like, we have limited budget, so for sure, we can't um cover everybody's flights and and stays and and meals and stuff like that. Um, yeah, that's that's something to basically figure out on the very short term, because this is in six and a half week. Um, but I think it's still in time to to do get that sorted. Um. Yeah, in my mind, it would be amazing to to get a couple of people um over, but I also, yeah, I'm I'm quite sure we wouldn't be able to pay like full expenses. Um, so there's no rules for this. We have, we don't have any um presidents known, so yeah.
Can I, sorry, maybe to to change the conversation. I was just thinking. Um, I wouldn't mind, uh, and I'll be delighted if some of you here would be happy to join as admins to the challenge groups, either on WhatsApp, on Telegram, just to make sure that at all times there is order. Like, let's say there was a message and I did not notice and it was an advertisement and not following the guidelines ju- just for that kind of sake. So if anyone is interested, just just let me know and I'd be more than happy to add you as admins and and uh. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Um, yeah, well, I mean, that's less exciting than actually going to Panama, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know.
Being a Telegram admin. Um.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the best way of going about that is. Um, like, we do have some reserves, which we are free to spend as we please. It would feel like a bit of a waste to simply fly everybody and it would be fun, don't get me wrong. Uh, but it it's probably not the best spending of uh reserves to to simply, well, yeah, how to put it, uh to to just spread it out and 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 have no no longer have any reserves left. Um. I I, yeah, very open to suggestions. Um, also, I'm not sure if it would make sense, like if, for example, if we would pay uh half of the cost for somebody, if that would convince people, actually, well, that still leaves the other half of the costs, right? So I'm not sure if that.
I'm also really not opposed to paying, like, it's it's not a money issue. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to be there from an intellectual level, because I'm not the best in AI.
Uh, s- sorry, guys, uh, I will have to leave. Uh, I go do some sport. Um, it was good to see you and.
All right, Sharon, thank you. See you in the WhatsApp group.
Yeah, bye, 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 everyone. Thanks, Peter. Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Um, yeah, I would say in light of time, maybe, sorry, Ian, go for it.
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna chime in and say I think it would be great to have ambassadors on the ground there. Um, he could be, you know, could be doing stuff like, um, you know, engaging with folk online and doing different things. So on that side of things, I don't think it's a big deal that, you know, you don't have a, you know, a big AI technical background or whatever, you know, you'd be playing a different kind of role. So, yeah, I don't think that's a barrier for ambassadors to attend.
I'm also well happy to be put to work. I know that events are a lot of work and if they need staff, also happy to help out. But yeah, um, it's half past eight, so maybe we need to move on with the with the other topics.
Yeah, but it's a cool topic.
It's a cool topic, man. There's some.
Uh, just wanted to quickly mention as well, like, um, we want to get the discussion, kind of pre-BGI discussion going on Discord. So we've created a, an area on the Snet Discord um for BGI discussions. So it'd be really great if ambassadors want to start kind of hanging out there and just um, you know, being there to chat. Um, so that, you know, when we start having people joining, then there are actually people there to engage with. So, you know, and we can maybe see about making ambassadors, I don't know if we've done this already, but you know, making moderators on Discord so that you can kind of moderate the chat as well.
Yeah, fair, fair. Um, yeah, some people are moderator, not all, uh, not by definition. Um, well, definitely to be continued, but uh maybe let's cover the rest of the agenda first before we can dream on here. Um, and and make dreams reality as well. Um, yeah, a a quick um shout out to the supervisory council sessions. They've started um a series of uh three sessions. First one was uh earlier today. Uh, recording will be on YouTube shortly. Um, these take place on thirteen UTC at Tuesday. And basically, it's uh workshop sessions to um basically help the supervisory council sort out the or provide them with input on the creation of the decentralization blueprint. Uh, there will be at least three, perhaps more, uh, but do join in uh next Tuesday if you can on thirteen UTC. And then, well, on deep funding tunnel, I'm I'm thinking, Judith, maybe I can give you the word, because I would be more or less reading out your announcement, I feel. I'm not sure if that's accurate.
Um, we're just having a a a quick town hall this Thursday where um Jan is gonna introduce the twenty twenty four operations updates and strategy and new new uh funding platform strategy. As some of you may have heard, there is a new uh proposal platform um that has been developed over the past weeks and it's very exciting. So we're moving away from the spray platform and this proposal platform will be tested in the first test round, which is coming up in twenty days already. So there's gonna be a short um, kind of a short deep funding round with just ten, yeah, about ten proposers, hopefully. And so in this town hall, we're just gonna chat about the the test round and also the the new the new platform and a little bit of, yeah, the operations, of the operations and roadmap side of twenty twenty four. So it'd be really nice to see you guys there.
Redefinition. Um, basically, for a bit of context, um, I I think most of you are aware. Um, but right now, we've got um a group of um technically eleven people with the ambassador role on Discord. And this is about, well, I I would say about a year uh old by now. And it's kind of an elitist um situation, which nobody wants that elitist situation. Um, and there's been a lot of talk over the past half a year of of how to open that up. And basically, um, well, e- earlier today, we had a a session where we um looked at some numbers, uh, where Tavo um and with the power of Power BI, um, looked at some numbers over the, well, basically of the contributions that are captured in the treasury system. And let me admit from waiting room. Um, yeah, basically, we played around a little bit and pretty quickly, there was some nice um numbers popping up. Uh, let me try and figure out how to switch. There we go. Um, it's in the roles and levels documents at the very bottom. Uh, basically, what we did or what we filtered on, uh, so let's say the criteria. Um, just a quick check, I assume my this document is now sharing properly, right?
Yep.
Cool.
Yeah, we can see that.
Yeah, before I go, just rambling into the dark, um. Yeah, basically, what we what we filtered on um would be uh twelve hours of participations over the past six months. And these are recognized by Jimbal tokens. And additionally, six hours of um contributions. So um stuff that gets rewarded in um AJX tokens or USD value. And as an additional uh requirement uh would be that there has to be any activity in the past three months. And that resulted in, let me zoom a bit, uh, twenty eight people. Um, yeah, basically, the the moment, like, for example, when uh right now, when there's um a vote on something like a conflict resolution document or um code of conduct document, like basically like program-wide policies, stuff, uh, potentially something like um uh budgets approvals. Uh, we would turn to this this group of twenty eight for having a vote or a consent check or consensus with twenty eight people is is a bit tricky. It really depends on on what uh what the topic would be. Yeah, so basically, I I wanted to have a bit of a temperature check with the town hall on on, is this making any sense? Is this completely the wrong direction? Is this ready to start experimenting with? Yeah, well, as you put it, like, daily checks is is complete overkill probably. Um, but maybe like once every month, this would get updated uh to to check uh who's part of this this group of um core members, ambassadors, um, long-term contributors.
And another thing that we didn't add, but I think would be a great, like, incentivization is if there is a requirement to keep contributing, not contributing, but participating at least two different workgroups. And after the call ended and was eating, I was thinking, it it's it's also good, because it, why should a person have a voting power if he maybe only does translations? Like, it clearly means it doesn't care about the holistic view, in in my opinion. But it it, but and it's not really hard to kind of in three months to join, I don't know, one one boarding workgroup or check out what this video work doing or like joining another session just to participate. And that would already kind of give the clearance that, okay, he's he's checking out what other people are doing. So he's not just living in on his own bubble. So I would add that requirement into, but uh the more we add, the harder it is to get so into that list. Yeah.
Fair. Uh, it's it's definitely, well, something to consider and and to discuss and and decide upon. Walter, you have your hand up. Go for it.
Having designed these systems before, uh, I'd like to alert you to the to the fact that if you regularly uh check participation parameters um as qualifying for membership in this governance group, uh, you open it to an attack where uh, for example, you know, somebody's kicked out of some guild that uh used to qualify them day just because of internal guild politics. So effectively, you make membership in a guild or a war group uh determining of their future participation. So like before you make these systems awfully complicated and intertwined, let's let's do a little uh, you know, figuring stuff out. In other words, it should be easier to get in than to get out simply because otherwise it becomes an attack vector for governance attacks where a clique wants to win by eliminating the people who who oppose.
Yeah, fair remark. Uh, at the same time, so far, um, fingers crossed, uh, we were not in the situation where people got kicked from workgroups.
Well, I mean, the whole point of governance is to deal with situations when things are not nice. Right now, we can do everything on a handshake, well, something. But it's when things get contentious is when these systems prove their merits, so may as well design for that.
Fair enough, yes. And well, just to reiterate, uh, the 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 context here would be quite experimental, right? Um, like these these numbers you see on screen, like twelve hours over six months. Theoretically, they can be, I don't know, eight hours over four months or or twenty hours over one month. Like, it can be anything. Uh, this would be, at least that's the way I'm seeing it right now. We we would um perhaps commit to a a quarterly or a one-quarter experiment, see how it goes and not not like be locked in and and, ah, this is now forever how things are. Um, kind of goes without saying, I guess. Um, that's that's how we approach most things. Uh, but just to, yeah, I do think it's important to mention. Go for it. Walter?
Uh, also using gimbals as the determining factor for participation is, uh, I mean, I can extract Discord chat stats, because, for example, the groups, uh, you know, I'm in, don't use gimbal. So it just happens that I have a teeny amount from something somewhere, but, you know, education uh and, you know, marketing-related stuff and uh, you know, uh, incubation, we don't use that. So so I don't think that should be, it could be one of the parameters, but it shouldn't be the exclusive one, the gimbals, because a lot of groups don't use them, like particularly the ones I hang in.
Fair. I I do think they do use gimbals, to be honest. Um, I might be wrong, but I I think by definition, the moment the task points get allocated uh on on D-work, there's gimbals. Um. Well, I do.
We've been super busy in incubation and in uh education and cranking stuff out recently. And I don't think that resulted in the same, in a single gimbal for me, for example.
Yeah.
So all I'm saying is that the folks who designed this clearly are in groups who've used gimbals regularly, but that's not the entirety of the organization.
Well, that's not without a reason, because in theory, all workgroup should. But Tavo, maybe you also wanted to say something like.
Oh, how about we can vote on that, whether all war groups should?
It's just how we work since we started using gimbals, like, we all use it.
Let let's make it the governance decision.
That would feel a bit pointless to me, but, I mean.
If half of the groups are not using it, then clearly it's not a working policy.
Yeah, but I would not agree with that.
All I asked is that, you know, these are, it's an interesting proposal. There are corner cases. You know, instead of saying this is how it has to be, I've given you examples of how it does not match reality using myself as a test case. So can we move forward but not set this in stone and make it a governance decision rather than saying this is how we operate and we haven't been, because we haven't. You know, like, uh, after six months in this organization, I can tell you that a lot of groups are not doing things like that. We can shift those groups, we can shift the requirements, but can we like be governance-oriented around it rather than instituting it top-down?
Uh, you make an implication there, which I don't agree with, but let's get that part. Um, like, it's just tough to mention. Also, the moment you put a USD or an AJX token uh task on D-work, automatically, by design, gimbals are also included. But, yeah, I I agree. If workgroups aren't using gimbals, then for sure the system doesn't make sense. No problem there. Uh, I would say most groups are using it, and if that's not the case, that's definitely something to look at. So, yeah. Um, Rojo?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh perhaps clarify something that Walter is saying, and I think both of you are saying the same thing, but maybe missing the point. Like, some workgroups are not making some tasks or maybe not assigning task points to some things that are actually happening. And therefore, no gimbals are being used. And you can say, well. And therefore, no gimbals are being used. And you can say, well, yeah, they should make tasks for that, which I think they should, but some people don't. Simply, and uh. On the other hand, uh also that was mentioned, like use of gimbals. I I'm personally against the use of ga- gimbals, just because it's used by other groups. But I'm in favor of using some token. Gimbals works for us now because it's already there. There, and it was easy to implement, makes sense. But I think at some point we'll probably migrate away from it, just because of the fact that, you know, we don't control it. And like someone can contribute in another community and have gimbals from there. And then, uh you know, they they can migrate their gimbals and. We we will recognize their gimbals even though they weren't created in the ambassador program, like. If that makes any sense. Um. I don't know if you can assign metadata to gimbals. I think it's uh. I don't know how doable that is, uh but since it's a a fungible token, so I think, I mean. I don't think you're able to really assign data to every token you're uh sending. Uh but. Yeah, that's that's kind of my uh bug about it.
Yeah, it's a fair worry. Um I do think, like, looking at this uh screenshot right now. Um this is all based on the treasury transactions we did. So if you would buy a whole bunch of jumbo tokens, you wouldn't all of the sudden uh appear.
Yeah, the 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 fact why the gimbal is in parenthesis is that the the actual rule is. Twelve hours of participation. The the way we prove it is because we have some gimbals and we have database values of that. But that would be any other token and any other metrics, and flash news, there is going to be a different token. But more of that on treasury could go.
Well, it's true. Actually, if you check, some of you, if you check your wallet, uh that you you might already spot something there. Now, but Walter, please don't get me wrong, you're, I I do understand your worry. Um if if. We implement a system like this, everybody should be using the system, otherwise people that should be included are not included. I think that kind of covers your worry, if I'm correct?
So as far as the overall philosophy, I believe that contributions should be rewarded. And so, for example, not so much the account, the proper accounting for contributions. So if the uh, you know, lead of a particular guild isn't very good with accounting. That shouldn't penalize the people within that guild who are doing solid work. You know, maybe they're not using D-work the way it was intended. You understand what I'm saying? We should aim for the people and for the contributions. Uh and the accounting systems are secondary to that. That's all. It's just like, put people first. That's all I ask.
Oh, I I do see a role there for the accounting system, because otherwise, how are you gonna know? But. Yeah, okay. Um Curtis?
Yeah, not to continue extending uh the conversation, but. What I'm kind of hearing from Walter too is maybe multiple metrics, multiple. Modals of of information, is that on the roadmap for contribution tracking in some way? Where it's more than just, say, a D-work task? And is, does that address your concern, Walter?
Well, specifically, how, see, to me, none of this is a problem. I understand crypto, I can do wallets. Less technical people, more my struggle is that I understand D-work and how it derives from Trel. I know the founders of D-work and their APIs. I'm not concerned about myself. You have to understand. When I get passionate, it's not about me. I can stand my own ground. It's when I feel that it may affect others. Who may be less vocal, less technical, for whatever reason. They may not play out through our little, you know. Precision mechanisms. So again, just put people first and not the numbers. That's all I ask.
So, not to be a dick, but how would we do that? Simply ask people, like, did you do?
But basically, if you find that some accounting wasn't done, but we as a governance body can say. Yes, this person is in and we'll catch up on accounting later. You know, so maybe these parameters qualify people, but also. A- as a group of individuals, we can make our own decisions. We're not robots based on numbers. We can recognize, ultimately, we can recognize contribution as people, not as accounting.
But this is what we actually always been doing here. Like, there are situations where we don't make tasks. And this this was started already a year ago when, oh, let's make a role, like. You you have this role and you get specific amount of rewards. Because the whole point of this thing we're doing here is to recognize contributions. The only way you recognize it, you say. You you recognize, you say what what was recognized. And as soon as you put it into the word, it doesn't have to be the person is doing it, that it can come up with conversation. But the the idea is to recognize it in a way that is in a written form. And how it's going to be translated, that's a secondary issue. Right now, we use treasury system and T work because that was the easiest path and was already kind of in use.
I get it. Oh, here's here's what I proposed. We understand the parameters of this discussion, we take it offline, and we understand that we'll be fine-tuning it as we go along.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's what a temperature check is about. Um I didn't mean to now say this is how we do it. Not at all. Like, there's plenty of discussions to have on on. Well, the exact numbers, uh wha- what you're saying on that workgroups aren't properly um. Administering stuff and therefore gimbals would not be assigned to people that do make contributions. Yeah, that's a big issue if you want to implement a system like this. I fully understand that.
And there is also this aspect that if you basically make it exclusively algorithmic without the human. Uh gatekeeping, then it becomes subject to gam- gaming. So people just do. They focus on doing what the numbers will reflect favor- favorably rather than what we want them to contribute. You know, the ways in which they should contribute, and also potentially these are attack vectors. That as individuals, we can say, listen, that's all numbers. We know this person is in, we want them to be in, right? So so I'm just, there are reasons why algorithmic. Only qualification has a downside, again, purely from experience.
Yeah, and and agreed. Curtis?
Yeah, I ju- just I think, I agree. So I agree with both um Walter's concern and Peter's description that this has been. Sort of the intent um since the beginning. Uh there has been, as TiVo mentioned, previous discussions around. How we can create a system that cannot do some accounting. But then allow the governing, the decision-making to be flexible enough where it just becomes a metric, it's a tool. So if the guild can take in the D-work contribution along with meeting attendance, along with X, Y, Z. To inform their decision. And I feel like that's that's what we've been doing, is trying to be human in in how we address things, allowing the system to be flexible enough. To where you can account for different metrics. But we also need, which I agree with that path, we need a structured system. And in which it becomes a powerful tool for informing decisions, and that's what um is being put forth. So I do agree that we're on the right track.
Thank you. Rohan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a suggestion, uh actually two suggestions. The first one is goes to Walter's uh Walter's um. A remark and uh it it is about how we shouldn't make it purely algorithmic, and I agree with that. I mean, uh obviously, one thing you learn in life is that every every heuristic can be gamed, right? And uh, I mean, one thing we can do is that whatever algorithmic or whatever. Number you come up with here is basically a qualification number and not a finalization number. And what gets finalized is basically the current ambassadors at for that time will be sitting and then. Will be asked, does anyone have anything to say about this? Like, and if nobody disagrees, and if someone disagrees, obviously they have to present their case, right? But if nobody disagrees, then the person gets introduced to the role. That's again my opinion about this. And then on a on a on on another, on another tangent. I I do believe like probably we should go more towards a point system. And the reason why I say this is because I don't think this is very scalable, especially if you add other metrics. So now we have metrics of U- USD value and then gimbal value, meaning hourly task points. And i- if you want to add, uh I can't think of something now, but if you want to add any other. Kind of metric uh over there to judge people upon to 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 enter the role, then you'll be left out with like, okay. Well, how should I should I include this metric for everyone, or should it be like an extra thing, or like, how should that, how should it work, right? And I I think defining a point system where every single uh aspect, like for example, the the amount of gimbals. Uh the amount of task points that you have would contribute to certain points to your, you know, to your general point. And then things like your USD task, whatever, and some other types of tasks can all contribute to this point. And then at the end, we define like a benchmark, right? If you have like, I don't know, twenty points, then you can qualify to the role. And if you don't, then work harder and then this kind of stuff. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, fair. Um. Yeah, one potential thing to bump into during experimentation, I guess, uh on that human factor, that that would be like. The moment there's a potential policy to be implemented or a budget to be approved or a vote for some. Yeah, anything, any event happening, basically. That then. Yeah, we we'll have to go through that a couple of times, maybe, to see what that's, um if if there would be changes needed, if people feel excluded, if. People feel very strongly somebody shouldn't be included. I can't really see that happening, because if people did contribute, they did. So I I think it would would mostly be about including somebody who by the numbers hasn't been included. But I I I personally would be happy to just bump into that while experimenting. Um. Yeah, thanks a lot. I mean, these, there's a couple of um additions now, uh as you can see on screen. Walter, go for it.
Uh the, so architecturally, is this body of twenty seven people a governance body? What's its reason for exist? I mean, I kept proposing that that it's a governance body, first and foremost.
I mean.
As a body.
Yeah, governance, that's that's, I mean, that's a separate discussion in a way. Um. Right now, we do, we do have the situation where there's people with the ambassador role, and that's kind of this. Uh there's there's some topics which first get put to that group before going to the wider community. Well, that's. Something to get rid of, pretty much, and this group of twenty eight would be opening up that group, uh removing the elitists. Um. Connotations, um if you will. Um, but yeah, earlier today, I I think, yeah, that's that's something there um to to figure out. What exact, like, we're not doing uh role-based uh rewards, like, you wouldn't, if you're in that group of twenty eight, you wouldn't get like. I don't know, every month you get a hundred tokens, regardless if you do anything. It wouldn't be like that. So yeah, for 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 example, policy implementations and and budget approval, that is governance. Others, question mark, open to suggestions in a way, if we if we feel the there's certain stuff which we. Better bring to that group rather than to anybody who randomly shows up. Does that somewhat answer, or?
Having made, having the concept that it's a governance body. Then says, okay, you have these rights of access and so on, and your responsibility is to participate meaningfully in the governance. Right? It provides that balance between the rights and responsibilities. That if you wanna contribute, but don't wanna bother with governance meetings and processes, fine, you know. You don't have to be of that kind.
So far, I've seen it as something that would allow you to have that role based on contributions, and because you're involved with the ambassador program. I wouldn't make somebody, let let's say you do a blog post translation every week. To then force that person to also have a say on on whatever the policy implementation. If they don't care, I I it's fine, like, I I wouldn't put it mandatory to to be involved with governance, I feel. But that's just my personal uh view.
Just to be clear, like, uh I couldn't, I couldn't hun- hundred percent understand this. Like, I kind of contributed a bit to that document as well, and there were some parts explaining what each role and stuff like is responsible for. And I I was just wondering like how, you know, sometimes you do something, they give you like an NFT for it or something like that, you know, like. Just recognition, basically, but it doesn't have any weight in terms of governance or. Uh I don't know, like, uh any other type of, uh you know, responsibility, basically.
Well, I I didn't see too many responsibilities in the in the previous um document, to be honest. It was a whole bunch of description, what levels can do, what they can do, how you can move between levels. Uh but not like um this group uh being being, I don't know, level four or three or five, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is very basic, but I mean, like, assigning levels and this kind of. But this is, I mean, if you take algorithmic route, this is not really, uh this is not really valid, right? Uh but I don't know, I do recall some conversations about like what each level. Like can do and cannot do. Uh this sounds weird, but uh. I don't know, I was just curious about that, actually, like, uh. Do, are 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 we assigning these levels as a recognition? Or do we want to put some weight on it in terms of uh governance of, you know, the ambassador program itself? And if we don't put like governance weight on that, like, what do we base governance on?
Well, in a way, I I figured, let's keep it simple and let's just make a distinction between. A random person that shows up or somebody that is a long-term contributor. So that that would basically be only two levels. Um. I'm not sure if there's much benefits in in having. Uh five levels, let's say, like, we had the round table.
Oh, no. Oh, no, I don't. I'm sorry, I I don't really care. I mean, it could be just one level as far as I care. I mean, I don't care, to be honest. Uh two levels is fine. I like, uh you know, I like, um. You know, the binary type of things. It's it's easier to deal to deal with binary, right? Uh, I mean. Uh to, yeah, my my nature, like, inside me, there is like kind of a voice telling me that it's like. Okay, long-term contributors should be taking care of governance. But many people might say that's not fair. Someone can come maybe in just one month and have this lot of awesome ideas and all. And and it's totally valid.
Hmm, well, this system would allow for for easy, as as Walter called out, uh easy joining, hard to get out. Uh this this allows for that. If you do the twelve hour of participation plus six hour of contribution, if you do that in one week. But while you.
Oh, cool.
Update before the system, uh you know, uh has updated all the the checks, but that's it.
So no time limit. That's really cool. Okay.
I mean, unless we decide that should be implemented.
No, I don't think so. I don't think so. Time limits are stupid.
Well, there is time limit. If you stop two weeks after three months, then.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I mean, like, from you start participation, I mean, if if you achieve this in two weeks or one week, that's fine. You're in, basically, right? That's cool. Okay, I like that. Because, I mean, yeah, people have different rates of, you know, like contributor and and all, it's cool. I like that.
But this would simply prevent somebody from joining one town hall and then being able to vote on um a budget approval, for example. Walter?
Indeed, it's an attack vector that if you allow rapid joining. Then, you know, there can, there are organized attacks that can be executed. Again, how about we shift out of this venue, refine it. Provide pro and con and exercise our governance ability to then fine-tune it. There are alternatives. There is a voting power where simply somebody who is a recent joiner. Uh may be participant in voting just with lower power. With a lower multiplier, right? So we don't even have to make. Anyways. It's a, it's a fun evolving topic. Let's evolve it, just not here and now.
Yeah, fair. Looking at the clock, uh we are about in the to bump into the incubation slot, which I do want to prevent. Um. Rohan, go for it.
Yeah, just a small uh comment. I I I wanted to. Yeah, just a small comment. I, I wanted to mention that next week we will have the video work group. The video work group monthly, well, month, probably yearly, we're gonna do like a kind of a review to what happened since inception till now. We'll also introduce new governance framework. So yeah, I mean, hope, probably you will tune in. Hopefully, I mean, tune in next week and we'll talk about that.
Sorry, which guild was that? Did you say Rohan? Education guild?
Uh, no, video work group.
Ah, thank you. Um, yeah, looking at the clock, I don't think we should even attempt to cover the workgroups in this call, because that will make us bump into the next slot for sure.
Who want to say one thing? This Thursday, bring your proposals to treasury call or start sharing them because this is new quarter. We have been talking about this. Since the beginning of quarter three and like to kind of implement that now in this quarter one, where we just don't randomly do stuff, but say people what, what, what we are doing.
All right, let's, well, seeing there's five minutes, let's use maybe another minute if there's another work group lead that wants to put a quick shout out to what they're doing. But do keep it short, please.
I'd like to thank everybody who progressed this so far because this shift has been pending for at least six months. So thank you very, very much for moving this forward and whatever this, what may have sounded as disagreements were, were just attempts at fine tuning. I'm like 96% behind this already.
That's good there. Uh, yeah, and I, I hate muting people, but the moment multiple people are speaking, it just doesn't compute. Rohan? I think final turn before we close down.
Final second. I just wanted to quick mention, Guillermo and I have been kind of brainstorming like a developer's workgroup merger with 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 incubation and we will be talking about that in the upcoming meeting in like a minute or two. So if you're interested, please join in and, you know, tell us what you think.
All right, um, I think that's a wrap. The final check in the room, raise your hand now or well, be silent for at least three minutes before incubation starts.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks all for joining.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for an interesting conversation.
And Peter, please don't forget, you know.
Well, I opened the room for incubation, so I'll record it later.
All right.
I don't think there was an actual remark with the video, but cool. Okay, that's it for now. See you on the next one.